Thank you very much, and if everybody will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We'll now have the clerk call roll, please.
Mr. Bryant?
Present.
Ms. Bryson Murchberger?
Here.
Dr. Kraft?
Present.
Ms. McHeever?
Here.
Perrier?
Present.
Ms. Torres? And Mr. Wade?
Thank you, and I will now entertain a motion to allow a couple of our board members to attend virtually, please.
I so move.
My second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So I now will ask for a motion for approval of our proposed agenda.
I so move.
And I second.
Any questions or concerns, and I do want to make sure. Lisa, what did you want to make sure about? Sorry, you didn't hear that, there was an announcement, just wanted to make sure we do hear from either you or LaShandra if you have any concerns. So we have approval of proposed agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, thank you. So we do have also, if we can have a motion for the consent agenda.
I move acceptance of the consent agenda.
My second.
Any questions? Board members? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Jennifer, LaShandra, did either of you have a question?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, Dr. Gurley, our next item is our budget documents.
Absolutely, and we'll have Ms. Powell come forward with our presentation.
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Gurley. The work session this evening is really compared to the ones that we have ahead, starting in January, this is. Some of it's technical, but it's really light in comparison, because this isn't really a decision-making session, it's a time to provide foundational information and background information, so that everyone goes into the decisions ahead with some common understanding. So our topics this evening, I want to give everyone a briefing on how we closed out fiscal year 2021 and our position with our fund balance. We're going to talk about enrollment and demographics and give you an update there. Then we'll go over the historical summary of key metrics that relate to our financial status, and then it's that time again, every other year, we need to do a little bit of a heavier touch on local composite index, because that's a big player in our state funding, so we'll do a little bit of discussion around that, and then we'll talk about just some other comparative information and then just next steps to move forward. So with that, Leslie, am I okay to advance the slides? Thank you. So, first of all, our closeout for the previous fiscal year. The Audit Committee meeting was held on December 2nd, that's the annual meeting, and I want to take a quick moment to thank Ms. Leah Purrier, who in my entire time with Charlottesville City Schools, and I had this conversation with her after the meeting, but she's been the one constant for us on that committee, and I truly, I've told her this before, but I just really have appreciated her and her consistency in serving in that role, so thank you, Leah. When we, in the closeout for fiscal year 2021, we returned $387,251 to fund balance. And this money is added to the fund balance as a technical adjustment for the budget the next year, this is a process we go through every year. It's important to understand, when, when people look at a number like $387,000, it's a lot, it's a lot of money to you and me as individuals, it really is. But I always like to put it in, in context and explain that you have to think about it in the context of our total budget, it's less than 1%. It's right around a half a percent of variance for our expenditures to our total revenues. It's the equivalent of if your household budget was $100,000, it would mean that you managed all the comings and goings of your money for a whole year, and you had $528 left at the end of that year to put into savings. I think most of you would say that that's pretty tight, especially considering that we have a legal obligation not to overspend our revenue. So it's another great year, and I credit Renee Hoover for all her great work. Ms. Purrier could also tell you all that the audit results were once again good with regards to both the bu, this budget, the general fund and special revenues budget, and also our school activity fund count. So again, thanks to everyone who is part of our financial organization, bookkeepers at the school level, the administrators, who all are responsible ultimately for managing their budgets within the projects that they manage. It all reflects a great team effort.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
No, happy.
Just for everybody's sake, can you explain again at the end of the year, again, the amounts of money and where they are allocated to, and?
Gain share, the gain share with the city, or?
That, yeah, and what, what happens with those, those monies?
Certainly, so the city and the schools have a gain share agreement, I, I don't have a slide on this topic, but basically, the first $100,000 of money that is revenue over expenses goes into the school, goes towards the school CIP. The next, any amount above that 100,000, up to the next 100,000 stays with the schools to be added to the fund balance, and then anything over that is split 50/50 with the, with the city and, and return to the city. So that's how gain share works. I do have a slide about fund balance to explain what that is. Fund balance, when you look at it in our budget or in, you know, any financial reports, it's one, it's important to always remember it's one-time money, and because it's not recurring money that you can count on, it's the accumulation of the pluses and minuses of year-end settlements over decades. And there are three allowable uses for fund balance. It can be used to address costs due to enrollment growth, you know, unforeseen costs, because enrollment comes in higher than expected, shortfalls in revenue, which can happen for various reasons, or one-time expenses that are authorized by the school board. So it's not money that can be spent without the school board knowing and understanding what's happening with it. So the, so the fund balance as of June 30th, 2021, with this latest year-end settlement, it represents 1.26, so about 1 and 1/4% of the general fund budget for 2021. And the question always comes up, is that too much, is that too little, what, what does that amount represent? And the GFOA, which is Government Finance Officials Association, recommends a minimum, at a minimum, that general purpose governments, regardless of size, maintain unrestricted budgetary fund balance of no less than two months of regular general fund operating revenues. Basically, that's the recommended savings account that you have to address unexpected things or special projects. And so, again, to give some context, two months of expenditures for CCS would be over $12 million, or, which is also 15% of the general fund operating budget, our fund balance is not even close to that. So we just like to explain that a little bit, to give people some context and background. Okay. So enrollment. We, most of you who've been around for a while are very used to this V-shaped chart, right, that tells the story of enrollment in Charlottesville. We had sustained growth from 2012 until 2019, and then with the pandemic, like all school districts across the Commonwealth, we saw a significant decrease in our enrollment. And our initial recovery for this year so far is around 10%. The good news is, we knew that the models we've used in the past to project enrollment were just basically out the window, dealing with what we were dealing, making projections heading into this year. So we used the state numbers, the state projection numbers, which are actually done by Welborn Cooper Center here in Charlottesville, and they served us well, because our budget work and our staffing, everything we looked at, we, the term is average daily membership, which is a little bit different than enrollment, ADM has to do with the students you're serving in your building, and it's only K-12, it doesn't include preschool. Anyway, our budget was built on an ADM of 3,957 students, and our actual fall-funded membership came in at 3,989, so 32 to the good. I'll take that every year. And the one caveat I will give is we're still kind of waiting to see the, the impact of the recent influx of immigrants. So I believe that we're going to start to see more of a, more of a significant recovery of those enrollment numbers, but we're just not certain yet how the recent immigrants to the area will settle out between Charlottesville, Albemarle, and the surrounding counties. So this series of charts, again, is one that has been around for a long time, but I think it tells an interesting story, and we always kind of touch base around this, this time, at this time of year. It shows our demographics, it's a lens on our diversity and how it's changed over time, and the story of Charlottesville, you know, back around the beginning of this, around 2000, so this is two, it goes in 10-year increments. In this case, you're looking at 2001, 2011, and then the year-end 2021, these are all, each year-end snapshots. And you can see that you have black, white, other, right, that's, that's what the pie chart shows. What's happened is, and it's important to understand this when you look at 2011, that's the first year after the federal reporting for race changed. It's no longer, it went from being what they called single-race reporting to multi-race, and so the categories up until, up through fiscal year-end 2010 are listed there, and there were, what, eight, nine? You can see them all listed there. Now, it would take an entire slide to show you, because you can, people can now report in any combination, and, and it's not just even two, for example, you can report as Asian, white, American Indian. People can pick as, select as many as they feel applied to their, how they identify racially, and so that is certainly contributing to that other slice of the pie getting bigger, and it also makes me question how much longer this is going to be a relevant set of charts, but we have the data available, so we're continuing to just report out on it, but it's, it's challenging, because anytime you have a major shift like that in the foundational data, looking at it over time, it just, it just makes it a different, it's going to make it look different regardless, I guess. So the most I've seen in a given year is our students have identified with 33, 33 different races, and it's always well over 20 any given year, and the most different combinations of selections that have been made is, I believe it was 33 so far, since that change. So now, looking at economically the status of our student population as far as economically disadvantaged students, and this is where we are seeing some significant changes. Over the past two decades, our average is always 50, right, it is, the average is 50%. We had a low of 43% at, in 2001, and we are now at our highest point since, in this two, in the two decades, at 55%. So the average is 50, and the high end of that average has been 55, that's where we are now. When I say now, I mean as of year-end, June of last year. And this increase is dispersed across all racial categories, that's another thing that's worth noting. So the pie charts at the bottom here, what they're showing, the total is our overall, how our overall disadvantaged population has been tracking. The pie charts show the percent of that total broken out by those same, what I'll call the simplified categories of black, white, and all other. And so you can see how that, the pie chart is moving in relation to the total. The next set of charts gives a little bit different view on the same information, which is, if you wanted to say, look at within our white student population, what percentage is identified as disadvantaged? Within our black student population, what percentage is identified as disadvantaged, and then within all other? And what you see here is that it's growing in all, all categories. The white, within our white student population, compared to 10 years ago, we went from 20, a little over 20% disadvantaged to over 31% disadvantaged within, within our white student population. Within our black student population, we've gone from 79% to 85% over that same decade. And within our all other student population, we've gone from 62% to 66%.
What's the definition again for economically disadvantaged, what's the cutoff for that?
So it, it has to do at this point, because of the CEP program, it's mostly identified through direct, what they call direct certification, which is through social services programs and participation in those programs. We, at the schools where we still collect applications for free and reduced lunch, that can come into play, but that is one of the things that we all knew going into CEP, that for purposes of tracking this, CEP does mess that up a little bit, it makes it a little foggy. As we have more schools come online and see CEP, we're going to lose that data point of the free and reduced lunch applications. I will say that for purposes of our federal funding, they've got calculations in place that make sure we're not harmed by being CEP, because I checked into that big time, as we have done more and more with CEP. But it doesn't change our access to the data, it's just a data point that we don't have available once a school becomes CEP. So someone could have possibly qualified for free and reduced meals, but but we're not, we won't see that if that's the only qualifier they would have, and they're in a CEP school.
And the, and the Virginia Department of Education uses, I just looked at the website, it uses the definition that if this, if the family qualifies for Medicaid and TANF benefits.
There you go. TANF, TANF?
TANF benefits, and I just lost the acronym. Yeah.
And, and forgive me, I, I refer to that umbrella, we call it direct cert, or direct certified programs.
Kim, this is LaShandra, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
The, I'm looking at the 2021 percentages, so for our students who identify as more than one race, it's 66% of the, those total students, and for black students, it's 85% of the total population of black students, is that?
No, it's not the total, but, oh, well, it is, it, of the, that's the percentage of the total population of black students, yes, correct.
Is, are those numbers comparable to the state or national numbers, or are we higher or lower?
Afraid I don't know, that's something I'd have to try to find out, I'd, I'd actually don't know that off the top of my, I, I don't know.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Good question, I just don't have the answer. Okay, so if, if, I don't want to cut questions short around this topic, there's another one, okay, I'll.
No question, TANF is temporary assistance for needy families.
Okay, so we'll go on to this next chart, which is what we call the historical summary of key metrics. That's what we're, I and I refer to it as, and I'll just quickly let you know what this is, I think it's an interesting chart, and it's just one that we maintain year after year after year. What you see at the top is our breakdown of our various revenue sources, so where's the money coming from? The section below that shows how those revenue sources are changing year to year, as far as it being, what's the percentage change year over year? And then the next line is our total percent and change, percent change in budget one year to another. The line below that is a tricky one for us to keep up with, because especially right now, the inflation numbers are really hard to wrangle. I have shown you, the, the source we use is the, is USInflationCalculator.com, and there's not an official annual update number yet for this year, this is typical for this time of year. But what you, what you need to know is, for example, in October, it was posted at 6.2%, well, I'm sorry, September, 4.4%, October, 6.2%, and what I'm hearing is that the November numbers were even higher. So just know that inflation is something that we have to be very mindful of as we go through this budget process, it's weighing heavy on everyone personally, and it's certainly going to be a player in this budget process, and I think that's all we can say about that for now. But we do try to, what we do, we don't try, we do, when the inflation rate, the, at the annual number is posted, averaged for, averaged out for the year, we do update that chart with, with this chart with that number, it's just too soon to update it yet for 2021. Okay, next, so the next section shows the percentage of the budget that each funding source represents, then you have a line that shows our enrollment, and then you can see the movement in the local composite index. And what you'll notice there is whenever you see the local composite index number go up, what that says, it's the local composite index of ability to pay, and we're getting ready to dive a little deeper into this topic, but every time, in theory, every time the LCI goes up, that's an indicator that the locality has more ability to burden, to shoulder the burden of the cost of education, and then you should see an increase in local share proportionally, and you tend to see that in Charlottesville, the locality is generally very supportive of education. What you'll see is that, for example, when it went from, if you look at 1718 to 1819, and you see that it went from a .65 to a .67, you will see up above that the, the city's percentage increased, you know, pretty significantly, went from four to 5.2, and then as a percentage of the budget, it went from 68 to 69, almost 70%, so that you're looking for those movements to correspond. And then our per-people spending is also noted there as well.
And with that increase in the locality's ability to pay based on the LCI, that typically correlates with the decrease in the state support, correct?
It does, so what happens there, you can't necessarily say it's going to be a net decrease, because if it's a great budget year for K-12, we could still end up getting more money just because the, the state puts more money into education, but the issue is we will get proportionally less, so whereas funding may go up for everybody in K-12, if there's a major push or initiative, especially around certain things like at-risk or salaries or whatever, but we won't get as much of state support to take on those initiatives as we would have otherwise. So whether it's in, some years it can be a net loss, and it's really painful when that happens. But other years, it can be a net gain, even if your LCI goes up, you just don't get the same proportion of state support that you would have otherwise. So it's a, it's a loss of funding over what you would have gotten otherwise, and I, I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get into these next slides, because unfortunately, until you actually have calc tools to work with, you can't really, you can't attach, attach a number to how much you actually lost, you know, or gained, or whatever, you have to have the actual numbers, because everything's moving relative, relative to other things, I guess is what I'm trying to say, and not doing a very good job of, but anyway. It's a lot of moving parts. Okay, so now we'll talk about the LCI. This chart basically just gives some background information, it started in the 1970s and really hasn't changed since, the most part, and again, every, this is the key part, the LCI computes the locality's relative state share of three revenue capacity indicators, so it's looking at the true market value of real estate, notice that is not the assessed value. The locality doesn't control this based on what they do or don't do with assessments. It's based on market values, Virginia adjusted gross incomes, that's from tax returns, and taxable sales from the locality. So it's saying, okay, that's what they're using to determine the locality's ability to generate revenues or those indicators, and they look at how those things move between one locality and another relative to each other. So we could have an increase, but if other localities have more of an increase, that can still, our LCI can still go in the right direction. It's all relative to how these same factors are moving for every other locality, cities and states throughout the Commonwealth. Then the revenue capacity is divided by what I would call the burden, like, how much population are you trying to serve? And the public school ADM is the primary driver in this whole set of equations. Population is there also, but it's secondary to the, the school ADM. So I am not going to go over this next slide, it's interesting information, it, it shows that final calculation, the six, the 6733 breakdown, I'm not going to read this slide, go ahead, Dr.
Could I just clarify the, the LCI with the map on it? Are we then just compared with other independent cities in Virginia, or just all across?
Great question, it is every locality, so cities and counties are treated the same in the eyes of the LCI. It is, great question, we are, every school division, so Albemarle County is a school division, Charlottesville City, Roanoke City, Roanoke County, each one has their own LCI. Good question, yeah, that's actually kind of the point of that graphic, so it was like that, every little red dot has its own LCI, those are the cities. Sorry, so this next slide is, again, I'm not going to go over this one in detail, just provides more information about the formula, and I'm happy to follow up with anyone if they want to talk more about the LCI, usually it's more, and then this next chart is simply a glance at the full equation. You'll see a different view of that here in a minute, but that's, that's the equation that they use to calculate the LCI. So, taking it back up to the level that most of us want to digest, the big driver of LCI is the student population, followed by the true value of property and so forth. You can see what, what drives the ship, relatively speaking, so you, all your revenues can go, be going up, but as long as your ADM, your student population is also going up, you can have a favorable outcome when the LCI is redone, and the LCI is redone every two years, and we hold our breath for it every time. And the LCI is redone every two years and we hold our breath for it every time. So hopefully you'll find these next few charts interesting. The, this just shows you how each component of the LCI has, is, has moved to get us to this resulting change. So in Charlottesville, our LCI, this shows actually, it didn't move a lot in the wrong direction, but it did go up a little bit. It went up by .0066. Okay? So, and this is where actually, this is the chart that talks to the fact that we won't be able to really understand what that means for us till we get our hands on our first calc tool. Then we can start talking about what it means. But the good news is it didn't change that much. Bad news is it did go in the wrong direction as far as state funding is concerned. So why did it turn out the way it did? The first thing is the average daily membership. It's important to understand that this is all based on data that is two years in the rearview mirror. And that can sometimes be really painful because you'll, you'll get an LCI update when you're in the middle of like a recession. But if you were ahead of the curve before the recession hit, your LCI is moving in a bad direction, right at the same time, your locality's suffering, it's, it can be a perfect storm of pain in there before. But anyway, the base year for all of this is 2019. So that's why it's showing that we did have an increase in our ADM. It wasn't a huge increase, but there was some increase. That was, if you remember the earlier chart that kind of showed our overall enrollment, that's when it was still going up, but it was starting to level out at the top. So our, we went up by .72%. The state average went up by .39%. And you can see both the percentage change and the absolute. So we went up actually a little less in numbers, absolute numbers than the state did, average wise. Then there's the population, the same kind of story. It went up, but not as much as the average population increase per locality. So moving on to the, the revenue pieces of the equation. When the Charlottesville number is higher than the average, then that component is putting upward pressure on the LCI. So for example, the true value of property went up a little higher than the average. The adjusted gross income went up higher than the average and the taxable retail sales. Now that's the only one that did not go up higher at a rate that was higher than the state and statewide average. So. Okay. So the next chart, LCI component change comparisons. I always put this in because we're so interestingly situated. Sometimes people refer to us as the hole in the middle of the donut, right? Albemarle literally surrounds us. So I think it's always interesting to look at how did everything move around us in relation to how things move for the city of Charlottesville? So the average daily membership for Albemarle went up at a higher rate than did ours and of course, the state. Population in general also increased at a higher rate. True value of property increased at a higher rate. The adjusted gross income, that rate of increase was roughly the same between the city and state. And then the taxable retail sales, their rate increased at a higher clip than ours. And you can see that, and this is really interesting, whereas our LCI went up by .0066, theirs went down by .0062. So it, it, it was very relatively slight changes, but in opposite directions when you compare what was going on with these factors for the city for the 2019 period versus what was going on with the county. I always think that's just interesting to look at. Okay.
I'm just wondering, like for this next calculation of the LCI, what, what period of time does that encompass?
So if that was 19, then the next one is going to look at 21. It's always taking the data for the, for the year end. It's always two years in arrears, if you will.
So it would be through the end of this current calendar year?
So what will happen is the, if you're heading here, the enrollment loss, which is the big driver, it's going to, it's going to hit our LCI hard. The only saving grace will be, everybody's enrollment was declining in public K-12. I do believe, and I've been talking with Dr. Bappes about this, I think we may have been about 2% higher in our rate of loss than the other school divisions, but it is going to be interesting. And what could also be interesting, and I know we're talking about the future here and we've got enough issues that are right here, that it's a little hard to, to go there yet, but it's, it's an interesting, I've already had these thoughts. So we could actually be faced with an LCI that is moving in the wrong direction because of ADM at a time when depending on what happens with our immigrant population, because by that time it would have recovered. And also what is happening with housing and affordable housing developments, where our need for service could be going up quite a bit. Now, the good news is we'll have, it's still a per pupil game for a lot of the funding. So the LCI means we're going to get a lower percentage, but at the end of the day, when you get a calc tool, you're plugging in an enrollment number and that's multiplied out to determine what your expected state revenue is. But it is, it is one of the challenges. The only thing that could possibly happen a couple of years from now is that since everybody was on a downward trajectory, and this will all depend on the winners and the losers at the time and who's, who's petitioning Richmond, but they can do what they call a hold harmless. And they had, they actually did that with state funding, not because of LCI, but because of the enrollment loss last year.
Yeah.
So there are sometimes hold harmless steps they can take, but it's, it's tricky, a lot of moving parts. And how we fare will ultimately determine, it's because, it's, it'll be a question of how things move relative to how things moved everywhere else. We know everyone else's enrollment went down too, but I think on, on, on the whole, we probably went down about 2% more.
Wow. And then the, the housing market here has kind of gone crazy, you know, the, so that number, I mean, definitely will be going up for 2021.
Right. It's going to be year end 2021 that informs the next LCI.
Right.
Where we were last year, which is when everyone was in a loss position as far as ADM.
Yeah.
I say that. I think every, I think every public K-12 lost enrollment. I shouldn't say that. So maybe there were some exceptions, but the vast majority, as you saw in the headlines. Okay. Any other questions? I don't want to, I don't mean to skate through LCI, but I know it can make some folks' eyes gloss over. I, I get it. I tried to highlight the key points. So we're on the home stretch here. This is, this falls under the heading of other comparative information. And those of you who have gone through this process with me in the past know that this is one of my favorite charts because it's so interesting. It's one that I used before I came here to look at things for another locality. It's the auditor of public accounts comparison of per capita expenditures and how, and per capita, which by the way, I had to look this up when I started using these charts, it's per citizen, right? So of the dollars collected per citizen, how are they broken out into the different functions relative to how other localities break out their dollars? And you can see there, the zero line is the average, the only two, the only lines, the only areas governmental functions that are below the average on a per capita basis are public works and education, we're slightly below. And I think it helps, this year I added this little smaller chart to the right. It, it actually shows the numbers that drive that chart. It's the per capita expenditures for year end, June 30th, 2020. And so for a citizen in Charlottesville, you know, general government is getting 337.78, statewide average for Virginia cities. And, and for this, by the way, I do just do comparisons city to city. I don't, the counties are part of the APA comparative report, but I only look at the cities. And you can see that statewide average, $192.34. And you can go through and see what the differences are per capita for year end 2020. And I just always think that's an interesting chart. And with that, I believe, we're getting very close to the end. There is an appendix to this presentation that provides more information about the state calc tools and calculations of the, the actual calculation for our current composite indexes in the back, because I believe Juan, Juan Diego Wade asked for that last year. Renee reminded me. So I went ahead and put the actual calculation of the LCI in the appendix. Okay. So as we close out, just a final reminder, our budget priorities and the strategic plan. As we move ahead, you'll see that our budget priorities that we workshopped through leading up to this point really align very well with our strategic plan, which is several years old now, but still very relevant. And so those are summarized here from our prior work sessions. And last but not least, just a friendly reminder about where we're heading next in this process. At the January school board meeting, what you'll be able to look forward to is an update with more specifics around how state funding is looking. That calc tool has not been released yet. So that'll be really what the regular meeting in January gives you an update on. And then I've got a bracket there around the different dates from January 6th out to that Saturday work session, which is always a significant point in our process. City guidance is going to be needed and, and to help us understand what appropriation we can expect from them, at least at this juncture, even just a soft number. And we already started those conversations and I, I know everyone's aware of the different transitions and challenges with city leadership, but I've really appreciated the work of the two deputy city managers and Chrissy Hamel in the budget office to try to do the best they can to support us with information. Because as we, if you remember back to our work session, look at the bridge building we have to do to get off of one-time funding for recurring expenses that need to continue and deal with the large amount of, you know, ARPA CARES money and address our, you know, the priorities, all of those things to do that, to choreograph that dance the best way we possibly can. It's really important that we have some good information early so that you all can make, we, we can make the best, you know, we can present you with the best information possible so you can make the best decisions possible to ensure smooth transitions from one budget year to a next and so forth going forward. Because I know it's kind of an overused term, but we are in unprecedented times and so we have to look at things differently. And we just, we are going to need some good information and some good understanding with the city to, to make the best decisions to move forward. And I think that brings us to the appendix. Actually, one more. And I have this printed up here so I'll know and then I'll send it to you. Sorry. So this actually gets into what I was just saying. You know, we know our priorities are pretty clear and I think the board's fairly laser-focused. That's a good thing, especially in the context of everything else we're dealing with. And I, I believe we have some pretty good direction about the process moving forward and how we look at programs. I just put these up here because these are things that were in com, they were points of conversation during our last work session back in September, based on things that were being said publicly and so forth at that time. And I think some of these, these points are still somewhat relevant. So I just wanted to remind everyone of, of just key pieces of information that will help us move forward the best way we can. And those conversations are continuing to the city. We look forward to picking up this process with you again in the new year, the new calendar year, that is. That is the last slide because I can see that the next is the cover for the appendix. So I'll, I'm happy to entertain other questions if you have them. And also if you just think of something afterwards and you want to email a question to me, please feel free, or Renee for that matter.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to open it up to questions and I'll start with Lashandra, if you're ready.
Yes, I have a quick question. Since there's going to be a change in the administration, I know the outgoing governor gives his budget proposal. How can there be a big shift in what the outgoing governor prioritizes versus what will happen when there's a change in administration and a change in, you know, the, the statewide offices? As far as the budget goes.
Right. So good question. What we see is we'll see, we see the governor's budget proposal first in December, then the next indicator we have of how things are going to move forward are the House of, the budget, two different budgets come forward, one from the House of Delegates and one from the Senate. So we get a House and Senate version. And so we get two more calc tools that are basically released at the same time and give us a lens to how each of those groups are thinking. And then the final budget that, that informs us, you know, to go forward is, is what's called the conference budget, where they, where the two sides of the general assembly come together. And that's the one that really means the most. You know, it's really hard to say how things will play out with, with potential changes between, I'm trying to remember the last time I, I've seen a change in party, you know, from the governor to, and I'm, I'm struggling to remember the last time. So all that to say, okay. That year, it wasn't really like big convulsive changes. It was fairly smooth. One of the, one of the best education budgets we ever had was when Mark Warner was governor. We just had to wait a long time to get it. It was a very late release on that budget, but it was, it was a really good budget for public education when it came out. I don't know what to say there. There's, there is opportunity for things to change because it will go from the government, the governor's proposed budget to both the House of Delegates and the Senate releasing their own proposals. And then there's that conference and there's opportunity to change in that process. And even in a normal year, right? There's, there's, there can be changes. Usually they're not massive, but.
Any other questions, Lashandra?
Not at this. Thank you.
Jennifer?
I, I don't have any questions.
Dr. Kraft?
Just real quick, if you could, just remind us and everybody who's watching, what does the comment flip the ramp mean?
I need to remember that myself. When I was trying to explain these unprecedented times and the, and trying to get off of the one-time money, basically it's that graphic from the September work session where you have a lot of your budget in one-time funding and you have to basically, over time, flip that where, yeah, it becomes more sustainable funding if it's for things you need, want and need to continue. And then over time, that reliance on one-time money, you know, you end up with a balanced budget. And there's a graphic in the September work session where I tried to illustrate what that looks like and what will ultim, what will contribute to how easy or hard that is, is how much new, new programming is added. And that was that part where you saw the two flip, you know, how big the budget is growing or not growing during that same time period where you're trying to flip from non-recurring funding to recurring funding sources for the programs that, you know, want to, you want to continue. And that's the reason we've been conservative with our ARPA CARES funds because we don't know how long we need to allow for that flip or that ramping that, because we've, because of everything that's going on with the city and we just don't have a really clear picture yet of how our local appropriation will be moving over the next several years. So that's, that's what that's about. I hope it was a helpful illustration and not just something else confusing, but I just think it's so important for people to understand those dynamics.
This isn't a question, but just a concern, I guess, trying to wrap my head around our increases in poverty across all of our demographic groups with what's going to look like this, you know, real increase in property values, you know, in the housing market. And sort of how do, those things don't seem to fit together real well here. And I'm not expecting an answer, but I'm kind of concerned that somehow the poverty level gets eliminated as a factor or reduced as a factor, you know, in the LCI. And anyway, I'm just concerned about it.
So the, the LCI does consider the volume of students that you're serving and the SOQ, which are the main funding pieces in state, well, I say main, more and more stuff's been being funded by lottery. But anyway, those things don't really account for the needs of the student population. It's just accounting for the number of students you're serving. And so the, there are specific programs that do look at your, the needs of your population, like the at-risk funding. So that's, you know, you can see an increase in at-risk funding, but you won't see the larger pots of money like basic aid, certainly the LCI, those things, to your point, are not impacted by the needs that are being served in the school because those revenue factors are just looking at what's going on in the community and it's, and the ability of the community to generate revenues based on those three factors.
Mr. Bryant?
Yeah, you may have already alluded to this, but you have mentioned a lot about the LCI in your presentation. And one of the first things you said that if the L- And one of the first things you said that if the LCI goes up, that means that the local community has the ability to pay. So is that the case in Charlottesville?
Well, what it means is, so the state, it's in the eyes of the state. It, it, it means that the state, you know, they tell you how it's being calculated. And they're saying, this is what we look at, these three revenue factors in relation to the population you're serving. Primarily the population you're serving in your school, but they give a nod to what's happening with the general population numbers as well. And they say, this is what we're going to base our decision every two years as to what your locality can pay as far as the percentage of the standards of quality or, you know, the state standards for education. That's a whole other topic about how they're not really up to the standards of what every school division across Virginia needs to do to meet expectations and needs. But that's a whole other presentation. Anyway, those factors are what they are. I mean, they're really clear and can, I guess the short answer. Can there be other things going on in a locality that influence whether or not the locality can really make up the difference when the LCI moves in a wrong direction? Absolutely. You know, there's, it's a, it's a snapshot based on, it's a snapshot in time that's two years and a years. That's one fundamental challenge with it. And it's certainly that formula that I've showed you, it doesn't account for everything that can be going on in a locality. So, and the fact that it's all just moving relative to whatever's happening elsewhere. It's, it's not even so much whether you went up or down, but how much did you go up or down in any of those categories compared to how everybody else in the state went up or down? In each of those, with regard to each of those factors. So, I mean, with anything like this, it's hard to have a perfect metric or a perfect measurement. But it is what it is, and it's been that way since the seventies.
Okay, well, thank you.
Ms. Perrier?
Thank you for the shout out, Ms. Powell, but you and Ms. Hoover have worked with our bookkeeping staff and other people that handle monies in our school division. And I know how happy Dr. Gurley was when we had our audit committee meeting and he got a clean audit. But that's something he needs to continue to expect because CCS is a good steward of the funds. And we spend our money wisely. And it is always for the betterment of our students. So it's been an honor and a pleasure and a privilege. Thank you.
Again, thank you, and we'll certainly work to support Dr. Gurley and continue doing the good work. Because the standard is, was high when, when I got here, and again, thank you for your consistency in helping us in all that and being part of the Audit Committee.
Ms. Powell, I have a question about the per capita expenditures.
Yes.
Graph that you present passionately.
I just think it's interesting.
I do think it's interesting, and you know, I mean, I've, so four years or, you know, and however many presentations I've seen and heard you present this. I've, we've taken it to our joint budget work sessions with the city. And I'm just curious. Because, you know, and then somebody always tends to comment about the per child funding that we have and, you know, the, and how, how we value and invest in our students here and how much money we do spend per child. But in, in a perfect world, if you're presenting this graph, like, how would you hope, other than what's obvious when you're looking at this and looking and seeing that education is one of two of those categories that is below the line there? That we could use this to impact, you know, or to paint a story or tell a story or help our case, you know, as we continue to work towards funding our schools and supporting our students, you know, because I think this is going to be a challenging year on a lot of different levels.
So the only thing, and I've actually say this every time, so again, sorry if it sounds like a broken record, but I never, I do find this interesting. I never intend that it be presented as an indication that something's right or wrong, but it does give a lens on resource allocation decisions of a locality. And so it's how, how is the locality of Charlottesville, you know, allocating available resources across the functions relative to, or the citizens' dollars, if you will, if that's the resources, right, in, in this, in this picture? You know, I, I don't know. I just think it's important. One thing people need to understand, and when you take this chart and you think about that per pupil, oh, you know, you have such a high per pupil. I think that you bring those two together and it reinforces another thing I say a lot, which is we're a relatively small school division. I think officially we're midsize, but we play big with our programs and what we offer to our students. And with regard to fine arts and STEM and our small class sizes and our neighborhood elementary schools and all of those things factor in. But even when you take all of that, that is going into that per pupil calculation. At the end of the day, the, this, this chart reflects the resource allocations of the city of Charlottesville relative to other cities. And this, again, this is just cities, but I think that's really important because cities are just have different things they need to do sometimes than counties do. And, and so I think it's more relevant when I limit this chart to just cities here. I'm sorry, I don't know what else to say about it because it's kind of broken record stuff, if you've been listening to me for years, but it's just, it's just a snapshot, and this information's all publicly available on the Auditor Public Accounts website, if anyone ever wants to check my math or numbers.
So this graph, as compared to, I'm finding it right now, the percentage of our funding that comes from, from the city. Is that six sixty?
So go back, I'll go to the key metrics chart for that. Sorry. I should do it up there, shouldn't I? Sorry, thanks, Leslie. Go to that key metrics. Okay. Okay. So this is just showing across all, oh, this is actually brings up another good point. Thank you for asking that question. So. This chart also brings out another important thing, which is because of many different factors, the fact that we aggressively pursue grants that we qualify for a lot, a lot of grants that another locality may not qualify for based on our percentage of disadvantaged. When you look at our total per pupil spend, people have to understand that that is not just local dollars. That reflects all of our dollars, including our local philanthropy dollars, our federal dollars. And the profile of those monies and what we're eligible to receive compared to another locality can be very different. Especially if you look at cities versus counties. So that's just another thing to remember. That total per pupil expenditure is not just, you know, so the one, the one graph is just about allocation of the local dollars, the per capita, local dollars. When you talk about our total per pupil expenditure, it's talking about all of our revenue sources. And I have to say one thing here, I feel like our staff across the instructional, you know, all of our programs, and I know my office, we go after every grant that we can, that we're aware of, we aggressively pursue grants. So. That's just another factor to consider. So I'm sorry, Madam Chair, you were, you were asking about the percentage and how it compares here. So basically, the, the the city, I mean, what's good news is that, okay, Local Composite Index of Ability to Pay says that the locality should be covering, you know, around sixty-eight, seventy, you know, sixty-eight to seventy percent. It's now six eight, eight, sorry, my, thank you, Leslie. We're going to six eight eight six. Anyway, when you look at the percentage that they're funding, it's, we went from six nine down to six five for the current budget, but it's, if you round up, that's sixty-six percent. So that's not wildly out of line. But again, we do way more than what is in the SOQ for our students, as does any other school division in the Commonwealth. Even school divisions with, you know, LCIs that are like point three something at the other end of the spectrum from ours. No one only does what's in the SOQ, I don't think. Very, very few. It's very rare.
This is kind of off a little bit, and I think I'm getting, I'm seeing charts that, that Ms. Hamel has presented recently in her budget workshops are floating through my head right now. When you look in the percent of their, I guess it's their operating budget that is allocated towards schools. And I think that's is it forty, thirty? Percent, I'm, I'm sorry. And the majority, I know there was a question that I think Mr. Wade had sent to you last week that he had been asked.
About real estate tax?
Yeah, like how much of current taxes, and maybe that's a question that Ms. Hamel would, would have details on. I mean, I know there's that forty percent figure that we throw around, but, so this fifty-eight million, say, for, for our budget in twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one that we're showing as far as that was allocated from the city. Those monies are, those don't so, aren't solely property tax.
Not necessarily. So what I tried to explain in that, that email when I was responding to the question was, you know, that was a, I think a guideline, I don't know what to call that number, that, you know, that was always, when Leslie Beauregard was there for many years, it was always a number that she would share in the fall when they had their first real estate tax projections. She would kind of throw out a number that was forty percent of that expected increase, and that was, for lack of a better term, starting point, right? We would, that was considered sort of a starting point. The city has lots of other revenue sources. And one thing that might be worth looking into, I, there was a, a slide that Ryan, who was with the City Budget Office, had that showed how their contribution to the school has tracked over time. And I think that might provide some interesting detail, because I do not think that when push comes to shove, I don't know that they say, okay, the revenue all comes in and goes in a bucket. Unless it's in like a special revenue program, like we have our special revenues. I don't think it's, you know, strictly tracked as coming from a certain source to the schools, sorry. And it's important to note that back when like the meals tax, meals and lodging taxes being discussed, the schools were part of that conversation. So it, you know, I think probably what I wrote in that email was, and I don't have it in front of me, but that was about as clear of an explanation as I can give, but I do think that maybe that slide that Ryan had showing how it's tracked over time, I think in comparison to what forty percent of the real estate increase would have been, that's a pretty, might be an interesting slide to look at.
And just, I guess, for conversation when we do meet with, with city council and with staff and trying to have a better understanding of where the monies are coming from that they provide to us. I mean, I think there's discussion and there's questions about the proposed property tax increases. And, you know, you, you put the five, five cents as a question mark. You know, I mean, I think people, meaning the community members, kind of want to know how much, how much of taxes already go to schools. Let's just say that, that's a question on the street, you know. So they feel like, are all of our taxes only going to schools? We need to be able to have this conversation, I guess is what I'm saying, and to have a better understanding amongst ourselves and, and with city council and staff so that we can then have conversations with, with community members as we move forward, not just for this current budget. And, and trying to, you know, flip the ramp, so to speak, and, and what that's going to look like. Is that going to be five cents of a property cent? Property sales tax increase, is it coming, you know, are we going to cover it for another year or what that looks like? And then also, you know, what's going to happen with reconfiguration? I mean, I think there's a lot. And again, we've said this before, that we are, I am, I'll, I'll speak for myself, I am pro affordable housing. I mean, I think we all are, and we don't want this, you know, the schools and the monies that, that we need to make these changes for our schools and our students and our community, all community members and all students pitted against, you know, monies that, that are needed or being asked for, for affordable housing. So I think it's, it's a critical time for all of us to come together and, and to know that, that we are supportive of all of our community members and trying to figure out how we can as, as a school division, continue to be supportive of the property tax rebates or supports or different programs that the city has, has in place, you know, and that, that we, I, I want people to know that we, I am, you know, supportive of those as well going forward. So I'm kind of rambling here about a lot of different things, but I think, you know, I'm looking forward to sitting down with council and staff and, and, you know, I look forward, I mean, I think we all do, of needing to have a better understanding of how they're going to support us and, and in what ways that's going to impact our community. Wasn't really a question, just a statement. And I, and I had reached out to Mr. Wade today and said, I hope you're sitting next to me tonight. So we can look at you and say, we look forward to, you know, our ongoing work with you and council and staff and moving forward. So. I, I just want to thank you, I guess, for this presentation. I don't know if anybody else has any questions, if, if Mr. Morse or Ms. Dooley, if you have questions at this point in time. Okay, let me know. But I appreciate, you know, the, the work that we have in front of us. Again, the questions about how, how we're going to make this budget happen. And I look forward to Dr. Gurley, you bringing, you know, to us once you continue to look through requests from the schools in our next sessions, I guess. And if anybody else has any questions. Or Ms. Powell at this point, I don't know, Dr. Gurley, you have any comments?
No, I just want to say thank you. I've been meeting with the, with the finance team and Dr. Odie, and we have begun the process of looking through budget requests, and we just want to be very thoughtful. I think the, the rant phrase, I forgot what the rant phrase is, but we're trying to, we, we will, you know, I think the thing for us is that we will find a path forward. And, and so we're just going to be very thoughtful and, and what I'm quickly learning, what I already knew, because just in education period, it just requires a lot of funds, period. And so those grant funds are, we, we rely on those things heavily, like Title I and, and just all of these other grants. And so, you know, that's one of the big ones. And so as when we come back, we'll, you'll see we've been very thoughtful in what we're asking and what we're, what we're proposing.
Ms. McKeever or Ms. Bryson Morrisberger, do you have any other questions?
I do not.
No.
Thank you. I do want to, I don't know if there's anybody on Zoom at this point who would like to make a comment, but we do have an opportunity from, for comments from members of the community. I'm not seeing anybody or hearing that anybody is there.
There are no participants, attendees at this time with hands raised or chats to make public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Como. Ms. Powell, thank you. Ms. Hoover, thank you all for the presentation. Good, good to see you all here as always. We do have, our next meeting is scheduled for January 6th, two thousand twenty-two here in the Charlottesville City School Media Center at 5:00 PM. So I will, with that, wish everybody happy holidays. Mr. Bryant, do you have a comment? No, we're good. I mean, anyway, I want to wish everybody happy holidays and thank you. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. Bye-bye.